Well, yeah, because those people were out getting petition signed a year ago.
Right.
Well, that was after, that was after old Lynn Hurst started that after, it's been in twen- after twenty.
They're going there and changing the dates and stuff.
How you doing?
I'm fine, how are you?
Who you with?
I'm with Avoca Main Street.
The what?
Avoca Main Street.
Okay, cool. What's your name?
Amber Moore.
It's right there on the agenda. Read your agenda.
I didn't want to.
I did, I read it, but you never know if they send someone else in.
So when is Bradbury's gonna open?
As soon as possible. Actually, I just submitted her partial claim on her challenge grant, and she's finally able to do interior work. So so much of it was getting three phase electricity in that building.
Sherry.
Oh, yeah, you're looking marvelous as always, yes.
I was feeding a bakery, and it was like, no, they're not open.
I know. She's, she's just as eager as everyone else to get this.
Oh, I know she is, she's very tenacious.
I think this one, once it gets in, stays in.
I'm glad to know what you're feeling when it struggles with that.
Oh, man, it's just like.
Sometimes it's so easy, and then next time you gotta.
Like I said, we never even had, we never had these.
With computers even around then?
Yeah.
This one, I've never had to change my password for.
What? Every three months.
Only on, only on my, one on the desk. I'm serious.
That clicks over when you do it on your desk, huh?
No, because I just did my dashboard, and it just made me do something that's not.
It's ten o'clock, I want to call the meeting to order. Would you stand and do the pledge allegiance with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show everybody's present. Everybody look the consent agenda over.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those against, motion carried. Okay, Sherry Dahlheim, Chief Investigator Coordinator, Medical Examiner, and Dr. Elliott, presentation of award from Iowa Donor Network.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce Madeline Clark, Representative from Iowa Donor Network, who drove here this morning from Des Moines to meet with us, and I thought it would be great for her to have some interaction with you guys as well, so you see a little bit more about what we do.
Good.
Hi, nice to meet everyone. I am here presenting the Legacy Award. It's beautiful, little award you can see right here.
Cool.
Um, Iowa Donor Network is proud to announce that Potawatomi County Medical Examiner is the recipient of Iowa Donor Network's 2023 Legacy Award for Innovation. The Legacy Awards are given to Iowa Donor Network's partner agencies and/or their dedicated team members for going above and beyond to collaborate with IDN on its mission of working together to transform lives through organ and tissue donation. There are six categories under the Legacy Award: Leadership, Education, Gratitude, Advocacy, Clinical Excellence, and Innovation. The Award for Innovation is given to individuals and/or partner agencies who seek new ways to educate and promote donation, develop and implement breakthrough best practices, and promote the use of technology to establish and improve the donation process. I nominated Potawatomi County Medical Examiner in part for their support in piloting technologies known as iReferral. iReferral uses an electronic portal and luau a phone call to share information with Iowa Donor Network. Their assistance in piloting this program helped Iowa Donor Network learn how other medical examiner offices, as well as EMS agencies, might utilize this program to increase the number of patients and families in Iowa who may be offered the opportunity of donation. I also wanted to take a moment to thank Potawatomi County ME for their continued collaboration and dedication to donation, helping honor the decision of many Iowans to be an organ, tissue, and eye donor. In 2022, Potawatomi County ME made 117 referral calls to Iowa Donor Network, resulting in five tissue donors who went on to give the life-saving and life-enhancing gifts of tissue. One tissue donor alone can impact between fifty to three hundred different individuals. Donation is a collaborative effort, and Iowa Donor Network is grateful to the entire Potawatomi County ME team for all they do to promote donation in their community. Congratulations on the Legacy Award.
Good, Sherry.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think that speaks, you know, to, to our team and the professionalism that Sherry has, you know, developed over the years. I think this is the fourth time that Iowa Donor has recognized us in the last several years. And so, you know, we work every day with families of the deceased and so forth, you know, just, you know, to give them the professionalism and the dignity, and to try to help those that are still alive. And so, uh, it's, it's a, it's a great job, it's an important job, and, and it's one that not everyone can do. So Sherry and her team do a great job.
Very good, Sherry.
Congratulations.
Yeah, good job.
Remember us receiving those before, or they posted?
Yeah, I don't think we brought it here before, but.
Is it up in your office, are they?
Six or eight years, I think, we've got like four of these different awards, so. We appreciate that relationship and the teamwork with Iowa Donor as well.
Yeah, perfect.
And there's a couple of new faces I don't think I've met before, but Chris Elliott, I'm the Medical Examiner for Potawatomi County, so pleasure to see you.
Jeff Jorgensen and.
Yeah.
Susan Miller.
There you go. Any other questions at all, or anything?
So if, if there was a situation where, um, that there was a possibility for organ donation, how do, how do we do that? Who, who, who makes that call, what's the process?
So what we do with every single call that we handle, be it a, um, a seen death, um, a hospice death situations, a lot of those we don't call in, but any seen death that we respond to, we will make a phone call on scene to Iowa Donor Network to start the referral process. That is not with any family influence, what have you. Sometimes there's no one there. Their wishes may be to not participate in that at all, and some of them are very adamant about being donors. We make that initial phone call, and we'll let them know, um, the information that they need that we might have, and then they reach out to families shortly thereafter once we are done with our investigation, and they go from there to see if, number one, the individual qualifies, number two, if they're willing to participate.
So you're, you're looking more at accidental death?
Natural, accidental, any kind of death, as long as it meets the criteria for donation, as well as, for example, if it's an accidental death that's an autopsy case, it's up to the pathologist to offer the blessing on whether or not donation's allowed.
So these aren't working? They are.
No, it's always.
Tissue and stuff.
We do occasionally have a live donation. For example, we have an individual that's in the hospital that is expected to pass. And, um, since they are alive, they, they are working to possibly do a live donation of organs at this point. But we have brain deaths essentially.
I do have a question too. There's need and there's supply. Well, how, how, how far does need surpass supply?
That's a question from Madeline.
I could answer that. Hi, um, so currently there is over a hundred and six thousand men, women, and children nationwide waiting for an organ transplant. Um, in the state of Iowa, that number is closer to around six hundred and seventy-five. So there is a huge need for donation, whether that be organ, tissue, or cornea. All of them are life-saving and life-enhancing. Um, organ donation itself is incredibly rare. Only three out of every one thousand deaths might possibly or potentially be a donor, and that's not to say that person is registered or the family is consenting to donation. So it is very, very rare. Um, tissue donation is a little bit more common. Um, it's not talked about as much, you don't see it in the media, but it is incredibly important. It can help people restore their mobility or ability to walk. It can give kiddos, save them from future surgeries with heart valve transplants. It can restore sight. Um, the need for donation is great, but to answer your question, there is a great need for it.
Yeah, I think a lot of people think about heart transplants, liver transplants, but, uh, you know, so many more are tendons, skin, corneas for eyes, things like that, tissues that can get. And, and as you noticed, I think, what was the stat? Hundred and seventeen referrals and you had five donors. And so, uh, we, you know, we've worked over the years to get that out there more, that, to, to get more donors, and it is getting better. Uh, but we certainly could, could get more and more all the time.
How old is Too Old?
There actually is no upper age limit in the state of Iowa. Any, um, anyone of any age can be a donor. The current oldest tissue donor in the state of Iowa is actually a hundred and six years old, and they were able to donate skin. So the older skin is actually much more, um, better for donation. It's a fun fact, I like to do it in my education. Ask them, how old do you think? And no one ever guesses, over eighty. So it's incredible that anyone can be a donor.
You guys do, you guys do just mostly a warm handoff, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. You know, they're the experts, and we will talk to the families if it comes about, uh, but we definitely notify them of the death.
Right.
And then they really, you know, have that relationship factor to, to contact the families and, and try to see exactly what their wishes could be.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Congratulations again. Appreciate your support.
Thanks for all your work.
Is there a local representative for Iowa Donor Network?
So I am actually the representative for your guys' county with Iowa Donor Network. There's four of us that work across the state. Um, so anything you guys need donation-related, I would be the person to contact. But when donation's actually happening, um, we have incredible teams, such as social workers and recu- uh, recovery surgeons that will come on scene and help with that as well.
Those are some pretty tough calls to make.
Yes, that we, our social workers are trained annually. We actually recently just had a practice day where, uh, members of the team that weren't directly social workers, such as myself, were like actors practicing, um, having those tough conversations for them. Um, I believe it goes over several days as well. So very tough conversations to have, but most families do find, they feel better after they donate, they feel like something good came from death. Personally, my uncle was a donor in 2012. It was very unexpected. Um, and seeing the people he helped influence and gave a second chance to, it made it grieve, that grieving process so much better and easier.
So when you do your driver's license and you check donor,
Yes.
does that automatically work?
It is up to family consent, I mean.
Even if you check that?
Correct.
Okay.
If you're under the age of eighteen, for sure. Um, under the age of eighteen, definitely family consent with tissue donations, what you guys are seeing a lot more frequently. That is regulated by the FDA, not CMS. So the FDA's criteria for tissue donors is a lot more strict. They call it life-saving. I argue it's li- uh, or life-enhancing. I argue it's life-saving. Um, but there are certain criterias where they will step away just because, you know, they think unfortunately you can live without walking, that you can't live without a heart. And so that criteria is much more, um, not difficult, sorry, I'm forgetting the word, but it, it's a little more, um, they have to reach different parts of it, and we have to do a two-year deep dive. So if family does not want donations or not cooperating, if we can't get that medical history, we will step away from these, so.
One thing we pride ourselves on on the investigation side is that letting the family know that they may potentially receive a call from Iowa Donor so that they're not surprised by it. It's gonna be an eight-hundred number, go ahead and answer your phone. They tend to be a little bit more receptive to the process and having the conversations at the very least, even when they are resistant, they at least are willing to have the conversations when we provide that segue.
Good.
So, yeah.
Good job, Sherry. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
So important.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, thanks for coming in.
Sherry, you guys want a picture of this, uh?
Oh, that'd be great.
Yes.
I was trying to get ahold of Craig, he didn't answer.
Couldn't get ahold of him. Why don't you come up here?
I can take it and send it to Craig. Get it posted on the.
Stand up there and we'll, we'll stand behind you.
There you go.
Dr. Elliott.
Yeah, hi. Nice to meet you.
Jeff Jorgensen, please, if you want my stop in.
That'd be fantastic, yeah, I'd love that.
Are you gonna do a minute? Yeah.
Hi.
Check your, do you want your driver's license?
Come on your side, that's okay.
Why don't you get it by Sherry?
Oh, okay.
Sherry, you got your work, there you go.
Yep.
Ready? One, two, three.
Oh, my God.
One, two, uh, Jeff, take one step to your left a little bit.
All right.
Stand there, Susan.
There you go.
I'm gonna get a soapbox to stand on.
Be all over.
You know, nobody.
If we get all stretched, we can give it to our.
Thanks, Sherry.
Go over Twitter and Twitter and Twitter and there.
And then photograph, we can get it on our website.
I T.
Thanks for that hard-fish for telling us.
Thank you.
Mark, give that to Craig.
Yes, Sherry. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a safe drive home.
Oh, thank you.
See you, Doc.
His name again was Dr. Elliott. I see, what's his first name?
Chris.
Chris, Christian.
Yeah, he used to be the head guy at Mercy here in Council Bluffs. I'm not sure.
Last year, he went to.
He's got an administrative position now, I think. He was the head of the emergency department.
Okay. Next up, discussion under decision to reappoint Mick Doetal to the Veterans Affair Commission.
So moved?
Oh, good.
Second.
Was there a meeting with the vets on this?
Yeah, I, I was there, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I talked to Mick White, Judy, at the, I'm an Optus Club member, trainer. He was all one, in certain terms.
I spoke with him as well, if he wanted to continue.
I didn't know if, I'm so confused with this veterans thing a little bit, but does the recommendation come from them and then we confirm it, or does it have to?
It's solely the board's responsibility to appoint commissioners.
Okay.
The only thing we have, the only thing that we have a say in is the, um, salary and the approval of their director or administrator.
That's right. The director title or administrator. What's up?
And this term is for how long?
Three years, aren't they?
Yeah.
And then, um, do we still have exhibition?
Yeah.
Two.
We've got two.
Okay, still got, uh, is it Chris? Who is the IT guy?
Andrew.
Andrew.
Andrew, and then Lynn? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got a motion by Bell, and a second by Wickman to approve Mick Doetal, Veterans Affair. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Amber Moore, Avoca Main Street, discussion under decision to approve funding request in the amount of $3,000. Hello, Amber.
Hello. Well, I am here for my annual request with the Avoca Main Street organization. We are a nonprofit that supports our downtown district. Uh, we're designated one of fifty-seven, uh, Main Street districts in the state of Iowa. And, um, $3,000 request is just for our general budget. It helps relieve our volunteers from fundraising additional $10,000 to support our programs and our annual budget. I'm happy to discuss with you any of the work we do or any of the results we have. Any questions you have?
You're doing a good job out there.
We're working every day.
That downtown looks great.
It does look great. We also, um, we know we're ready to do some streetscape amendments and updates from our original streetscape, so our design committee is working heavily with our city. Some of our trees, well, we found out some of the trees that were supposed to be planted down by the fairgrounds were actually planted in Main Street, so they're too large a trees.
Oh.
Or what was intended. So we need to do, um, some work to phase in so we still have nice mature growth that makes people feel safe, that keeps them active and walking in the district. And we'll be working with our, our city as we, we go through those things.
Good.
Make a motion that, uh, we approve the request for Avoca Main Street for $3,000 from giving.
Okay. I'll second that.
They're the only Main Street town we have. It's not, it's, it's pretty difficult to do. Some towns started down many years ago. It seemed like we had about three towns that started down that path.
And it was that, who was that kid? Planner kid that came in trying to, he wasn't gonna be Main Street, but it was gonna be kind of a offshoot of Main Street. What was his name? Worked for SWPCO, then he worked for Manimappa.
I thought it was, I thought it was, uh, it wasn't, uh, Main Street.
It was gonna, well, that started out as Main Street, and then I think it, it's pretty tough duty getting involved in all that.
Yeah, our river is accreditation standards we have to uphold, and they're switching to a new system that we're all learning about right now. We'll have to be under that in 2026 officially. I know I worked with Carson and mentored someone there for a couple of years trying to see if it was implementable there, but Carson was chasing a lot of work.
Josh was his name.
Yeah.
So the $300 monthly rent, you pay that to the county, to the courthouse?
We actually are, my courthouse office space is an in-kind donation from our courthouse committee. So our rent is an in-kind donation that's in our budget. And the same thing with my internet, I just steal a booster from the city hall right next door. So, uh, and city hall has agreed to pay for my cellphone for my work purposes. So a lot of our monthly expenses are really supported by our downtown nonprofits in our city, which is extremely helpful.
Okay, we got a motion.
Amber, you, you create, you've, uh, generated over $3 million in the last nine years?
Three million, three hundred ninety-seven thousand something or else, yes. And that's in, you know, transitions of property, renovations of property. That's specifically property upgrade in the district.
But was a lot of that grant funds?
Uh, no, actually, so our grant funds for our properties in our two $75,000 challenge grants and one $100,000 challenge grant, but two of those have not been fully remitted yet. So the only public funds included in that $3 million number is $100,000. So all of that is private investment.
Were you, were you, you get some grant funds from Iowa State too, didn't you?
Um, as a Main Street organization, no, we have not.
Okay.
Um, we, I plan to work with our city to write a request for our Avoca Veterans Community Center. We need to renovate our Legion Hall. It's past time, and the community still uses it so frequently, but it's, it needs ADA updates, it needs to be lots of a bottleneck to get inside, and it needs renewed use from the public. So we're gonna, we're working with them on that, but it will come from our local government.
Okay.
So a lot of times I will support grants from, like, our Boca Public Library, um, some of our other smaller nonprofits, because we're a 501(c)(4), which makes it hard to apply for a lot of things unless we go through the city. Um, but the Main Street specific grants that are offered through IEDA are the ones I can write in just without any extra signatures.
Don't do your renovation during election time.
I know, there are so many things we, there's like a hundred and sixty events where we're like trying to rehome during our renovation of the Legion Hall, because it is already our community center.
What'd you say was gonna open shortly?
Bradbury's Bakery.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and our venerable former dentist's office, which had to go a lot of changes to become.
All right, got a motion by Bell, and a second by Jorgensen to approve the $3,000 for Avoca Main Street. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks for the work you do out there.
Yes, thank you all as well, appreciate seeing you around.
Yeah.
And the library is having their open house today, I know so wonderful.
Till five?
Till five, yes.
David Bayer.
Book signing.
What?
Book signing.
Chief Information Officer, Information Technology, discussion under decision to approve board design memorandum of understanding for enhanced security services between Potawatomi County and the Iowa Department of Management Office of the Chief Information Officer for cybersecurity services and software. David?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is simply a, an agreement with the OCIO to, um, essentially install software on auditor's office computers, election computers, uh, to keep them safe and secure, um, using a software that the OCIO has selected called CrowdStrike. And so the agreement is really to boil down, we install software, we agree to work with them if there ever was an issue, uh, and hopefully over time, um, everything goes smoothly. That's really kind of a MOU, really. It's, we've, we've agreed to do it for thirty computers. Over time, we could do this for all county computers, but I'd like to take a latency approach just to see how it works in the auditor's office. It is required to be done in the auditor's office. The Secretary of State requires it, so, uh, we certainly are gonna do that. Um, but over the next, uh, year or so, we'll see how it works, and, uh, maybe something we would do elsewhere. I'd like to take a latency approach on that.
Okay. Do we have an agreement of any sort with these people already?
We do, this supersedes a previous agreement. Um, the previous agreement was really just for, uh, general use of software. This is more specific to CrowdStrike.
Okay.
It's replacing a product called FireEye?
FireEye is what we use at the county.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second to do an MOU for enhanced security. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
I'm just informed on that, how it's working, okay?
Will do.
Appreciate that.
Thanks for your email this weekend, that we explained it.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, Lee Voss, treasurer, which she's not in.
She's supposed to call in. She's watching.
Oh, she is?
Yeah, she's watching, so she's gonna call in.
Oh, wait a minute.
If it works.
I think I might have muted that and didn't get it.
Well, discussion under decision to approve tax delay pursuant to Iowa Code 427.9 for property located at 2643 Avenue L, Council Bluffs, Iowa. See if we can get her to call in.
She's on now.
She is. Lee?
Is she muted?
Nope.
Seems like we had this issue last week.
Calling from.
Here's something.
Hello? Lee?
That's odd. She might have to press that pound. Press the pound key.
Matt was gonna look at this up to.
I thought he was too, I wonder if we can get Matt down here.
I forgot when he said that we're doing it on here.
Brian, don't, let's not worry about that. You wanna just give her a buzz on that? Hit that, uh, hit that, uh, no, go back down on there.[1727.74] Hit that. Melvin's dialed in, ma'am, I see.
Well, yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Did you push that? Dial?
I can hear you, but you can't hear me.
This one?
Nope.
Something wrong with your.
The speakers just aren't turned on.
I got them all the way up. Maybe a mouse got in there.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now.
Okay. How you doing, Lee?
Well, my eyes, pack and eye are getting along just fine.
Okay. Well, we wish you speedy recovery.
Yeah.
Okay, this is on the, uh, tax delay pursuant to Iowa Code 427.9 for 2643 Avenue L in Council Bluffs. Are you, you're aware of this?
Yes.
Now, this, this doesn't abate the taxes. This just delays it for him, correct?
Just, just to raise now.
Okay. Questions?
And it doesn't remove any penalties?
All penalties go along with that?
Correct.
Okay.
Wait a minute, I thought there was a mistake. It got taken off.
No, I was questioning what, what happened with the penalties. I wasn't sure.
That was not on the state.
I didn't realize that.
I have no documentation.
Okay.
And that was not on the state. I have no documentation.
Echo chamber.
Yeah.
So Lee, do they have to bring the taxes current?
No, we can just suspend starting from now.
Okay, I don't have any, any of it.
You don't?
Well, I thought, I thought there was a mistake somewhere. It's what we talked about at the last meeting.
The penalties, we weren't sure on.
Yeah, we weren't sure on the penalties, Lee.
It sounds like there is.
The only way I was notified was that, that DHS made a mistake, but they never told me that.
Okay.
On their end.
So at this point.
All taxes and penalties are due before this property gets released.
Correct.
Are they selling at this time or are they just?
No.
Okay.
She just was reapplied or they reapplied and she went back on suspension.
Okay.
But there were penalties in the meantime.
So do we, do we approve this tax delay or?
Yes.
No, you got a choice.
Okay, we don't have a choice, Scott says. So, okay. Is there any more questions for Lee?
Well, I, I don't have a full understanding of what the issue is with the delay, but that's fine. I don't, I don't, we talk later.
Department of Human Services of the state sends down a, whatever you wanna call a demand that you suspend these people's taxes until further notice.
But then when the property is sold, it'll be, the taxes will come due.
Come back.
The question on this one was, there was a hiccup in and she was off of SSI or, uh, within the documentation. And so then penalties started, started accruing.
Right, because they told her to release it, which she did.
How long does this go on?
Forever, as long as she qualifies.
Okay, all right. All right. Any more questions? Lee, thanks. We appreciate it. Hope you get better quick.
Get better.
I hope I do too.
You're well.
Okay. So, need a motion to approve this.
I'll make the motion to approve the tax suspension for 2643 Avenue L, person one two, Iowa Code 427.9.
Second. Okay. Motion by Miller, second by Bell to approve the tax delay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, Lee.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Bye. Want you to have back surgery?
Um, yeah, I think I lost.
Thanks, Heather.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you coming up. Becky Lenahan, Finance and Tax Officer, Auditor's Office, discussion under decision to reappoint funds from the Board of Supervisors, Department 01, to WIC, Department 48, and assign Resolution 43-2023 regarding said reapportionment. Reapportion. Becky, is this just a pass through or what with WIC?
WIC is, yes, just a pass through account, but when they re, uh, back when we were doing budgets and they reestimated for the 2223, they reestimated higher, but we didn't change that because that doesn't show up, that doesn't reflect in Tyler.
Okay.
So we need to go in there and, and reappropriate it.
So Becky, why are we reappropriating county dollars to a state department?
It's on the advisement of the, uh, state auditor.
I don't. I, I don't get why we're.
Because your department has, has a hefty budget.
Well, according to what you sent us, they're all, they're fifty, I think it was 58,000 in the hole right now.
That's their fund balance. This is, all I'm talking about is their department balance.
So those should be state funds, not county funds? I guess I don't understand why we're putting county funds into a state department.
It's still budgeted out of the county. Don't put it in the county budget.
How the general fund and then the state money comes in?
Not the general fund, but it's still in, within the county budget. So it gets recorded.
Well, I think Tim's question is will the state reimburse that amount that we've put in?
Yes, they, their revenues and their expenditures washed. It, it's a pass through. Those just have not come in yet.
I understand that, but we, we, they work in the red all the time and we don't ever appropriate funds from the county to the state.
Right.
So why are we doing it now when their budget ends in September?
Because our budget doesn't end, our budget ends June 30th. And so that would put them over their budget. Like we don't do this reappropriate.
Well, what, why did, that doesn't, it doesn't affect the county? I, I guess I don't understand why we're appropriating.
It affects, it affects the, the books is what it is. It's cleanup.
So the, so that state, so that state department will be, will just show in the red if one of our, uh,
Well, it always, it always has been in the red because it's a drawdown from whatever they spend. Then they will draw down from the state later. So if the $3,000 is, uh, reappropriated.
It's 16.
16,100.
More than 3,000.
Okay.
16,000 dollars. Then that money will get drawn down from the state. But what we need to do here is just kinda tidy up the bookkeeping as far as that department.
Because it didn't register in Tyler is what you're saying, correct, Becky?
Right, when they, when we do our reestimates, reestimates, say the board needs 100,000 more when you reestimate that, that doesn't affect what was already budgeted. So if you're gonna go over your budget, you need to do an amendment. And that's why we do amendments for all these various departments. Cause that reestimates just, that's what they're gonna guess they're gonna spend. So then that triggers us that, hey, we better check these departments because they're probably gonna need an amendment.
Well, if they're 58,000 in whole, us giving them 16,000 worth of county money to try to bring them to the balanced budget at the end of the year, it does, it's not even, that isn't even close. I just.
Well, the department budget and the fund balances are two different things.
So do I understand this? We pay this now, we get this back later? Is that what I, is that what I'm understanding?
When the state catches up and all of their funds get into their, into, all of their monies get into their fund, then yes, you'll capture that money back.
We, we've never done, I don't recall ever doing this before. And we, we have never funded WIC at all. I mean, we pay some of their claims and they're in the red with us, but we've never appropriated county funds to bring them back to some semblance of, of a balance.
So that was the, the suggestion I got from the state auditor. I can readdress it and we can put it back on for next week.
Is it possible I can work with you on this?
You might wanna get Chris.
Let me get ahold of.
Chris.
Yeah, Chris. So let me get ahold of Karen at the state auditor's office.
Talking about Chris with WIC?
Yeah, she should be here too.
I should probably explain their processes better than we did. Probably work with the state.
Do, do you ever recall appropriating county funds to WIC?
No.
I don't either. Okay, thanks.
We'll just leave that table done till next week. Thank you, Becky.
That'd be the sixth.
Okay, next up. Reappropriate funds from a non-departmental, Department 99, to debt service, Department 06, and assign Resolution 44-2023 regarding said reapportion, reapportion.
Is, Becky, is this about the same thing that happened a couple of weeks ago when the?
Right, it's to, it's to fix that, that transfer.
Yep.
You can amend the budget, but then you also have to appropriate the money from that budget amendment. You'll do that again next month for our total budget is you'll have to do appropriation.
But this is part of the.
Take care of next year's.
Bond at service, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that 22 bond that we pre-lebbed for and didn't have quite enough funds in there.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Just, I'm pointing, just pointed out, so both the resolutions for the appropriations on the agenda have the same resolution number, so I don't know which one's right or which one's wrong. Nope, sorry, it's 43 and 44. That's wrong.
I thought you did it to several ones.
They are.
Okay. Got a motion to approve, looking for a second or? I'll second. Discussion? Melvin, would you do a roll call?
Chairman Shea.
Aye.
Senator Rogers-Bell.
Aye.
Whitman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Pam Jorgensen.
Aye.
Hey, thank you. Let me get ahold of Karen and then I'll email you too.
Yeah, why don't you?
I'll email all of you.
Yeah, why don't you email all of us? And Chris, Chris should have that, but also if we're gonna go further, I don't know how deep. You said 55 today?
Um, I thought it was 58. It's one in red, left side. Oh, you're on the right, the other one.
Where that's gonna go if they're gonna shut the government down.
Okay, there we are. 58, 243 and 47 cents.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next up, discussion under decision to approve and authorize chairman to sign rural transit system joint participation agreement with SWIPCO and approve funding request in the amount of $6,000. SWIPCO, this comes out of the rural fund?
Yeah.
That's the bus that travels the county?
SWIPCO, I believe that's out of, out of game. He's not a gamer now.
It is?
Yeah, yeah, should be. They have all of our, all of our third party or all these nonprofits where we've got everything in gaming now. It is out of game, but it used to be.
It used to be all rural services.
Yeah, two, I think two years ago or something, that's what showed we're in the game.
Really? Huh.
Well, it's not just rural.
Yeah, it is.
So, oh no, SWIPCO runs buses in Council Bluffs too.
No, I know.
Two Council Bluffs. Do they run it in the city?
Yeah, they have.
And they pick them up in the cities.
Yeah, their, their bus barns here.
One of them, yeah.
One of them is, yeah. Okay.
I think they still haul people up to, uh, Menards. They used to work at OSI.
I don't know if they're doing that anymore.
Yes, they are.
Are they still?
Menards.
Are they?
Menards and OSI maybe.
OSI?
OSI runs out of Atlantic, yep.
That'd be contracts with those folks, not.
Yeah, it would, it's both of us. It's just they hold people over in county.
So you're saying take it out of game, okay?
Attachment A is not attached to this document that's in the packet. The one that you're supposed to sign is attachment A on there.
Mm-hmm.
It is? Does it have an attachment A? Cause I don't think we can execute it without reviewing that attachment A.
I don't see it on there.
We usually do this like at the first of the year.
Do we do it twice a year?
No.
No.
Well, you might have proved it was in your budget, but now they're just wanting.
Well, I don't think this is a, uh, time-specific thing. I agree with Susan. Where is Exhibit A? I didn't catch that.
Let's get it on the agenda for next week then and get Exhibit A put on there. So we'll table that. Okay. Okay.
Susan, help me real quick. Where does it mention Exhibit A?
Right here.
Attachment A, it's in number 13.
That's right, uh. See it?
It just references nondiscrimination clause. Okay.
Six nondiscrimination clauses, which are the race sex of all this time.
Okay, awesome.
We probably have, but it's probably just from the last contract.
Or it might be something that they've recently updated and they just haven't.
Yeah. Well, I don't know. I can't see the signature they signed for them.
Was it John?
It's John still.
It should be John McCurdy.
Is he still there? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Get that table and get that connected to that.
Good.
Okay, discussion concerning the Tuesday, July 4th Board of Supervisor meeting. Wanted us to discuss that rather than just assume, okay?
Okay.
The courthouse is closed.
Correct. And I, I've heard some comments, uh, that usually Monday, if you're gonna change it to Monday, a Monday board meeting, uh, people take Monday off to kinda take the Monday, Tuesday off. A lot of people do that. Uh, I'm gonna say this, uh, Mitch mentioned that there's already four board meetings in June, or I'm sorry, in July. Why not, why not forego one in one?
Unless there, unless there's something pressing, I don't know.
There's.
I would be in favor of that.
There's departments that may have something that needs to get on the agenda. So you might have to push it back to Wednesday or Thursday.
Let Chairman.
Yep.
Well, as long as the department heads know, they can work around that if you know.
Well, just let the chairman decide whether, whether.
We'll do it on Wednesday if we need to and we'll decide the week before what everything looks like, okay? That sound good to you?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Just wanted everybody's update on that. Okay. Okay, committee meetings?
Uh, just Promise Partners and that was it. Uh, it looks like we're gonna be states cutting early childhood money to me, but.
Oh, the de-cap money.
De-cap money. Well, early childhood money. Didn't sound like we had a decision on that either, so.
Any? Susan?
Um, I attended the MAPPA Regional Planning Affiliation meeting with John Raspason and John was re-identified as the chair for their technology committee. Um, I attended the East Pot Soil and Water meeting in Oakland, the PACE meeting and Thriving Family Alliance.
Well, that's an I call. I should, I probably should start using the new name. We switched names. Used to be Promise Partners. Now it's Promise Partners Doing Business as Thriving.
Is that the way or is the other way around? I don't know.
No, it's, it's, Scott said it right.
Yeah.
Is it the bike trail meeting and I've done events Southwest Iowa also. Tim?
Uh, I'll have a comment here, Dr. Jeff.
I don't, I didn't do anything.
Okay. Uh, the only thing I would add is on our received and filed, uh, number one, um, is not part of our packet, so I'd like to take that off and find out why it wasn't on there and have it put on for next week.
Okay. Are you contacting them?
I'll get with Jeanette or Janice. That's where it should have came from.
Okay. Anything else? Public comments. I saw you signed up. The board will now allow up to 30 minutes for comments from the public. The board will call speakers to the podium in the order in which they have signed up on the form, provided each speaker is limited to no more. provided each speaker is limited to no more than three minutes for speaking. Must speak from the podium and must first state his or her name, address. For the record, comments should be directed to the board as a whole and should refrain from personal attacks or addressing individual employees or citizens. Comments should also be limited to one topic. Detailed information about the public comment policies available upon request. Good morning.
Shawna Anderson, 19377, 340th Street, Oakland, Iowa. I apologize, I dropped my, uh, new, uh, new rescue pup off at the vet this morning and took a lot longer than I planned, so I missed half of you guys, but I will watch the YouTube later. What I wanted to comment about was, after spending, you know, the last few weeks, like anywhere between four or six weeks outside of the courthouse, um, and watching people come and go and seeing the, for lack of a better word, condition of some of the people coming and going, I know over the course of sitting through meetings, seeing with the parking and the addition and the work being done on the courthouse, and last, I was aware of anyways, the discussion was to have four handicap spaces. I think if any of you all stood outside and watched the people coming and going, it's not going to be enough. I just, it's, there are a lot of people using wheelchairs, canes, or even not any physical health device that are slow, stumbling, and would need possibly, um, you know, spaces. And honestly, just putting a little bit more of my own thought into it, like, you know, this courthouse does serve the entire county, and that's a lot of people at any one time. So, just to kinda have you guys maybe think about like that four spaces for handicap accessibility might not be enough out there with that lot going in, which, you know, I don't know how the process of thinking about that goes, but just, you know, knowing that, uh, hearing that four spaces was what was gonna be thought about watching the people come and go, I think that might not quite be sufficient, so. I just want to comment on that.
Thank you, Shawna. Appreciate that, Tim. I'm gonna call Jason and ask him.
Should I get you to turn around?
I don't really appropriate, but yeah.
You got this, you were in the, awesome.
Let's see it.
What's that last numeral on your address, three, four, zero?
Three Fortyth Street.
Cool.
O S T H.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
I just slop it.
This time, I think we're all done, and I would say we are adjourned. Just remember the Boca Public Library, open house today. Well, you, you weren't signed up, were you? Okay. See you later.